Good evening, everyone. Would you please stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance? Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect our staff, employees, and residents of Mount Healthy. And continue to remind us that all that we do here today and all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth and for the greater glory of you and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April eighteenth council meeting. We got a few things to cover tonight, so let's get started. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Lingo.
Here.
Mr. Parsons.
Here.
Mr. Redding.
Here.
Mrs. Dosa.
Here.
Mr. George. Mr. Young.
Here.
Mrs. Rissel.
Here.
Okay, we have one member absent tonight. Would anybody like to excuse Mr. George?
I'll make a motion to excuse Mr. George.
Okay, Mr. Young has made a motion.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Redding. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried. You have before you the minutes from the March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three meeting. It's quite a few pages, actually, isn't it? Yeah, five pages. Is there anybody who has spotted any mistypings or misspellings?
Mr. George?
Please make a note that Mr. George is here. At seven oh four.
I saw one thing on the March twenty-first minutes in the very first sentence that the Economic Development Committee held a committee meeting, not a public meeting.
Wouldn't a public meeting be all right? I mean, it's...
It's a committee meeting. It was open to the public, but it's not like a public hearing or, you know, don't want to make it sound like that.
Scratch public, put in committee. Anybody else have anything? Is there any recommendations then, counsel? I'd ask for a motion to adopt as corrected.
Make a motion to adopt the minutes as corrected.
Okay, Mr. Redding has made a motion to adopt as corrected.
I'll second.
Mr. Rissel has seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried. Then you have the Mount Healthy City Council meeting minutes from the April fourth meeting. Again, did anybody see any misspellings or corrections? If there are none, I would like to ask for a motion to adopt as printed.
I make a motion to adopt the minutes of the April fourth council meeting as printed.
Okay. I know. Mr. Parsons has made a motion to adopt as printed. Mr. Rissel has seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried. Then we have one more item. Minutes from the Mount Healthy work session, April fourth. If nobody has any corrections, I would ask for a motion to adopt.
I'll make a motion to adopt the minutes from the work session.
Mr. Young has made a motion to adopt the April fourth work session minutes.
Second.
Mr. Redding has made a seconded motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, counsel. Correspondents. There was one item on your desk. I would like to make a public motion out here. The Mount Healthy Police Department is having an open house on May eighteenth from ten a.m. to one p.m. They invited fifth grade and lower. So I don't know how many classes might be coming up, but that's good to see. Units on display will be the police patrol units, court operations, local government, the mountain bike unit, firefighters, public works department, detectives and investigations, and emergency medical services. So they get to learn about how things work up here when they do work. Are we supposed to have any council members up here for the...
Keisha and Cordell, you both are still good?
Yep.
Yes.
I think we normally have two, right?
I don't know.
I think we're covered.
Okay. And that's the only correspondence I have. Does anybody else have any? Okay, guests and special events, none scheduled? Public input. Richard Strecker. If you'd like to come up to the podium, please. We need your name and address when you get there. Tell us you're Mickey Mouse. I don't care.
My name's Richard Strecker. My current address is sixty-three eighty-nine Creekside Way, Fairfield Township, Cincinnati, Ohio, four five zero one one.
That's good. What can we do for you, Mr. Strecker?
Okay, I'd just like to ask or find out what could be done to make a resolution to have a street or a drive named after Angelo Relis at the AA Restaurant. I just met him not too long ago, and I think he's the most amazing person I've ever met. Ninety-seven years old.
He works like a fiend.
Twelve hours plus. Drives from Finney Town. He said, Tracy told me everybody honks at him because he drives so slow. And when I had my first visit, it was middle of March, one of the customers said, you know how old he is? I said, no, he's ninety-seven. Told me about the article. I read the article last year at WCPO and asked him about his retirement. He says, I'm going to retire at a hundred. And then he said, maybe. And I think he's going to make it plus. Plus, he's just remarkable. So anyway, my question is, is there anything that Mount Healthy could do?
Well, we'll have to sure look into it. Joe, would that be... You're not streets anymore, are you?
I am not. But I'll be happy to work with Peggy to figure something out and...
We did just give him a key to the city.
I'm sorry?
We did just give him a key to the city on his birthday.
Yep.
As well, so...
March?
Yes. So we did recognize him, and he has it hanging up already.
Yeah, right in the window. You can see it just on the top left. He's got it. He put it up the same day, so...
I'm sorry I didn't notice. I'll take a picture of that when I see him.
It's a little plaque with the key on it and has a nice little inscription for it.
This is the party, yeah.
But yeah, we will...
Yeah, I think about... What was it, March? I met him in the middle of March. Anyway, I missed it, yeah. Okay. You gave him a key to the city.
Yeah, we did, yes.
That's cool. Yeah, I like that. But I don't know. It's just something that came to my mind, and I was wondering if it was possible. You know, because he's just such a... Wow, ninety-seven, are you kidding me? I'm bragging to everybody. I retired last June. I'm going to be seventy in this June, and I'm bragging to everybody, and I can't tell him about it.
Kind of get laughed at.
He's been working longer than I've been alive. Seventy-five years over there, you know? It's just pretty remarkable. I appreciate your reaching out. Yeah, thank you.
Well, thanks for coming up and bringing it up to us. Make us think about it.
I appreciate it. Am I allowed to take pictures and put a name to the face?
Sure. Suppose, yeah.
Sure, I think they're also on our website, too.
Yeah, on the website.
Mounthealthy.org, yeah.
Yeah, if you go to elected officials, it has all of our pictures and names and emails on there.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, next one. Dwight Weese. Weese? There is another E on there.
Just think of the candy bar. Reese's Candy. All right, Dwight Weese, fourteen twenty-one Sinclair Avenue, right here in Mount Healthy. I'm with the Urban Tree Commission here at Mount Healthy. Thank you very much for your guys' support setting that whole thing up. This coming Saturday, we want to invite you to take part, as well as those who are participating here in a mulching event that we have planned. We'll be meeting right here at the... Yes?
Next Saturday, not this coming Saturday.
This Saturday.
Saturday's the twenty-second.
This coming.
Twenty-second, okay.
It's this coming Saturday. I hope so. I hope I have the right one.
What was May fifth, then? Twenty-ninth is the honeysuckle. I apologize.
No problem. You've been a great help with us, Joe. We'll send you a text in the morning to let you know. Yeah, so we're meeting this Saturday, nine a.m. It is right down here at the very end of Perry Street. Address is seventy-eight sixty-two Perry Street. It's a... It's a city-owned little parking lot, blacktop area. We've had several loads of chips, wood chips dumped there that have been aging for several weeks now, and we're going to use that for mulching. Now, the importance of this with our trees. So this'll hear us a little bit to help you. A little bit of education if people want to know what... If somebody contacts you about this. You know, trees, they're used to growing in forests. When we have our lawns around here, that's not like what they expect. The mulch provides for them protection from the grasses and weeds they're growing up, which then helps to keep the lawn mowers and the weed whackers around, which allows those trees to then grow a lot stronger, a lot further up, not die off the ones that we've put all the effort into planting and getting going there. It also helps in providing nutrients for it as they start to break down, as well as containing, holding in moisture, so we don't have to water quite as much when we're out there watering. So a lot of benefit to this mulching. We would welcome you to join us, and if you have any questions, let us know.
What time was that again? That starts...
Nine o'clock. We're going to go from nine to noon. Bring gloves if you have them.
Unless you want dirty hands, huh? Okay, anything else, sir?
Nope.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weese.
Thank you.
Aaron Horsley. Come on down.
Aaron Horsley, seventy-three twenty-eight Maple Avenue. So just to clear up a little confusion there with Joe, just wanted to let you guys know about a couple of events that we have coming up at the wetlands. First one is going to be April twenty-ninth. It's going to be a honeysuckle removal. We're going to be working to remove the remaining honeysuckle from the front recreational side of the park. Now, make really... Excuse me, we've made really great progress in doing that, and I feel like we'll be able to do that in under two hours, maybe three max. It'll be ten a.m. until one p.m. And then the following Saturday, which is May sixth, it's going to be ten a.m. to one p.m. as well. We're going to be doing the tree planting. We'll have a variety of different trees that we'll be planting in, red buds, white oaks, different ones of the sort. Some of them we've already had healing at the park, which just means that we've put them in the ground to try to get them used to the soil conditions. And then we'll be taking those out from those spots and dispersing them out through the recreational area to try to reestablish the canopy that's been lost. So if you guys know of anybody that's interested in that, you can always have them reach out to me. I'd be happy to give them more details. Otherwise, I look forward to seeing everyone there.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron.
Anybody got questions? Okay, who's next? Who would like else like to speak? Dave, you didn't come up here just to stare at us. Yes? I called the three names that were on it, so I'm sorry if we missed you. Come on up.
Tom Klingenberg, seventeen thirty-eight Stevens Avenue, Mount Healthy. Just a couple of comments I'd like to make and see if we could maybe do something about it. Living on seventeen thirty-eight Stevens is a cut-through street, which I'm sure everybody knows. It's between two funeral homes, which has several funerals go up and down. It has several guests, one of them being the Unwin Funeral. Well, I was told, and I'm hoping I'm wrong, but I was told that that street is not going to be paved for two more years. Right now, it is in horrendous disarray. It's an embarrassment to the city. I have a hump in front of the house that when a truck goes by, it sounds like the... It's waking up the graveyard next door. And I just... They're trying to do potholes. I understand. They can only do so much, or the city can only do so much. But they're patching the potholes on top of the potholes. The water comes by, it pops right back up. We're back to square one. You've got to drive in the middle of the street to go the full length of the street without... People are almost having head-ons. We've had two ball joints break off that where the hump is in the street, and they lose their steering, and they've drove it up into the front yards. So it's a safety hazard, and it's also for all the kids, it's a hazard. I just didn't know if we are going to hopefully patch it or hopefully pave it sooner than two years, and do we have any kind of maybe people that write grants or something? I see North College Hill, which seems to really be kicking butt down there, taking, getting all kind of new property done and loans and grants and whatnot. And I just thought, if we can't get a city paved, you know, our streets paved to make it look good, it just, I don't know, it just looks bad, I think, for the city of Mount Healthy. And I just was hoping that maybe we have some kind of a... Maybe there's a... Maybe there's a street program I'm not aware of. You know, this street's done this time, this street's done this time, or if you have to write a grant or whatnot. I don't... I just want to voice my opinion and just see if there's any, anything we could do about it.
Who would like to answer this question? Mayor?
We're going to talk about street priorities tonight and submitting for grants and stuff like that.
I'm sorry, I did not know...
No, I mean, it's... Honestly, Stevens is not... We've got four that we're going to pick from. Stevens is not one of the four that we'll submit for this year, but, I mean, we've got them all on our list. You know, I mean, it's not necessarily, it's a specific rotation. It's kind of which ones we think we'll be able to get grants for.
Okay. Okay, if... I'm just asking, and I just, I know this is going to sound crazy, but I've seen where, and maybe we can't do this. I've seen where instead of just taking a shovelful of the blacktop and putting it down and just tamping it down, isn't there a way you can just cut it out with a quickie saw, put down the blacktop, run a steamroller, run a steamroller and roll it over? It would last a lot longer. I see it done in West Virginia. I've been up in the mountains there, and they do the whole area. They do these big areas. I mean, I think it would be more effective if we could at least get maybe something like that done.
Sure. We have that equipment. I mean, we've done that in the past. I mean, again, it's just a matter of, it takes longer than just...
Empire. I do understand, but I just thought, it's just, it's very disheartening to see that, you know, how bad it is.
Right.
I don't know how you prioritize streets, but I mean, that being a main cut-through, I would think be a little bit more of a priority than maybe some other ones. I don't know. I know it's a very hard yin and yang type thing, so...
Sure. I mean, the asphalt plants are all opening back up, so I mean, it's that season now, so I mean, we'll... A lot of these bigger potholes that we'd have a chance to fill, I mean, it's much easier for us to get asphalt and blacktop and...
Is there, is there anything that, I mean, for just putting a Band-Aid on it, that anybody that the city can come by, maybe in the next month or something, and at least maybe address some of the potholes that are there now?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what's going to happen now. I mean, in general, we'd probably make, I don't know how often they would get up there, but I mean, it was an hour away to get asphalt. Now we can go fifteen, twenty minutes away to get it. It's just, we've got one big... I mean, we can't get large amounts. We don't have the equipment to get, you know, big dump trucks full of it, but I mean, it'll be easier for us now to get that kind of stuff, so...
Okay. And I do have one quick other thing, because I did notice that these gentlemen were talking about trees. Real quick, they... I noticed, I guess it was a few years back, the city planted, or you had a chance to have a tree maybe planted between the sidewalk and the street through, I guess it was an organization through the Mount Healthy. I don't, unfortunately, I can't remember the name of it. Is that still available now? Or is that, was that just something that's gone away, or...
No, that's still available. We just probably planted... We have about twenty trees, twenty-five trees. They just planted on Elizabeth Street. They're active and they're planting. Of course, everything's limited by money, you know?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And if you need a tree, we can bring it up and we'll...
That's what I mean...
It's the Tree Commission is basically what they're called, Mount Healthy Tree.
Is there a way, I hate to bother you, but a way to get in contact or who I should call or talk to, or... Okay, that's why I wasn't sure. See, I wasn't, I wasn't sure. I didn't know. Okay, okay, that's basically all I have. Okay.
I do just want to give you a little background.
Yes.
We keep, we've been... This is a constant issue with all the residents, including all of our streets, with the streets. There's multiple things that are affecting what's going on. The biggest issue, which Scott referred to a bit, is that the closest asphalt plant was closed. So the closest place we could get asphalt was in Franklin, Ohio, and until the weather got warm enough, it wouldn't work because it would be cold by the time it came down.
Yeah, makes sense.
So that's why it's taken longer this season to fill the potholes.
Okay.
All, all of our street projects are grant-funded. Our street levy only brings in one hundred and sixty-five, right? So we apply for matching grants from OPWC. We get skip funding. We're applying for SORDA grants. We got some, we were awarded the first SORDA grant. So all of our street projects are grant-funded. We can't afford any of them with our own levy, as it is. So we are actively working on that. One of the frustrations that we have, we do have priority lists. It's a challenge sharing that or not, because the state will come in... We can share our priority, and let's say yours is the next priority, and then the state comes in and says, hey, we're going to redo all of Hamilton Avenue this year. They come in and redo Hamilton Avenue, and then you say, why the hell are you doing Hamilton Avenue? You told me we were next. This is one of the issues we run into constantly, and it's really hard to figure out a good way to communicate this.
Right.
Honestly, it's a challenge.
It's fair enough. I just...
But Seward is on the, on the list.
Stevens.
Stevens, sorry. Stevens is on the list, but not for this year's funding.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry.
You take, for example, Compton Road, which we're working on now.
Right.
You know, we get a hundred and sixty-five thou... I don't think it's that high, but I'll say, go with the hundred and sixty-five thousand a year from our levy, and then the street costs one point two million.
Yeah.
You know, and we got to...
Sure.
Put money up against the grant money that we can scrape and beg for.
I understand.
So Hamilton Avenue, we were very fortunate there. We got it done with a couple of different grants. But once again, we were forced to do that by the state.
Yeah.
Because it's a state highway, and they said, guess what? You're going to pave it, so...
I really appreciate what you said about sawing it out and...
Yeah, I mean, I just...
Using asphalt. We'll definitely, we can look into that. One thing we do have to be concerned about is to get these grants, the condition of the street comes into play. And sometimes, if you do a patch job, that drops you on the priority list with the state or matching funds, so...
You might want to take a look at that, because there's not really much there, I mean, other than the bottles, and you literally got to drive down the middle of it, so...
Yeah.
But I appreciate your effort.
We understand the frustration.
It's a frustration.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Who else? Anybody else like to address, counsel? Okay, then we're going to move on to committees and commissions. Beautification, Ms. Lingo. Beautification Committee, Ms. Lingo.
No report, but I will be scheduling a meeting at the next meeting.
Okay. Business partnership and alliance, Mr. Young?
I was not able to make the last business association meeting. I was out of town, so I have no reports on that as of now.
Okay. Economic development, sir.
We were, they had scheduled for a walk-through at the Antique Mall. That happened on Thursday. I was out of town. I wasn't able to attend. So I know the few people went up there, walked through that, and then also the port also walked through that. So probably like to schedule, do that new business, schedule a meeting, maybe before the next council meeting, and talk about that report and see what we come up with on that, so... That's really about all I have right now, so...
Okay, thank you, sir. Finance, Mr. Parsons.
No report.
Library, Ms. Dosa.
Thank you. The summer is approaching, and so are the summer programs at the library. They're going to be doing summer discovery programs for the teens and young kids that will start July, I'm sorry, June first through July thirty-first, and is up to age eighteen. There'll be more information to come out as that time approaches, and then I will provide that to you as well. Tech Days, the library is hosting a series of tech days where people can come visit a location near them, and the staff will help them set up phones or devices, electronic devices with library apps. You can also have the staff help you assist in navigating and doing researches on the databases that they have and any other online resources, so that is going to be starting. And then lastly, the Mount Healthy branch currently has tech days, digital drop-in sessions every Wednesday from four to five thirty p.m., and there's no registration required. And that's all I have for the libraries.
May I ask about the tech days? What exactly is that? Being a...
So if you come in with like an electronic device, say your phone or your tablet or something of that nature, the librarians there or the staff will help you like download those apps, show you how to work them on your electronic devices, and show you how they can be used for resources for you in obtaining things for the library.
Okay, thank you. Parks Commission, Ms. Dosa.
Look at there. The Parks Commission, we had a meeting yesterday, and we discussed plans for a couple of things, one of which is the concert series. If there's anybody that would like to help with the concert series and announcing the acts that are going to be there, let us know. We've already started delegating that between amongst us, but if there's anyone on council that would like to do a certain night or would like to volunteer to introduce one of the performers, please let us know. Please let me know. Just email me and let me know, and I'll put you in the rotation. Secondly, we talked about the park, which is a recurring thing, and we'll probably hear about this for a while because it's a major concern. We are trying to apply for a nature works grant, and we have started looking at that and what it entails. And so we'll be working on that. The due date for that is June first. So I'll be reaching out to some people on council and like the mayor and also to the city manager for their help in getting some of the documentation that's needed and required and some advice into how we can put the correct documentation that's asked and required for this grant. If there's anybody that would like to help participate with that, let me know, but that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Question?
Yes.
Is the concert schedule on the website?
It is.
Okay.
It is.
Thank you.
First concert is June sixteenth, so...
For those who haven't heard, the park, most of our playground equipment is declared unsafe by our risk management, basically insurance, so we had to take down some of the...
The structures.
Structures, because we are not being protected because they're a risk problem. I'm sure insurance won't cover if anybody gets hurt, so we've had to take them down. So we're in desperate need for playground equipment again, so that's what that's working about. Safety, Mr. Redding.
Just a few things. You've probably noticed, one, the monthly police report has not been in our packets lately, but so with the new changeover in the chief, I'm sure we'll be having that happen here soon within the next, probably for the next month, so we'll get that caught up. And then still researching a community block watch program, so it appears that there's a lot more to do about that than... And we're going to have to, I'm going to have to figure out a way to get that going, so more to come on that. And then I just had a question for Scott. With the fire department, have we heard anything from Lexington on the fire engine grant, or do we have a date like when we're probably going to hear something, or...
Steve's probably told me what the timeline would be. I don't recall off the top of my head, but we've not heard anything back yet.
And then the same thing with the firefighter grant, that one we're doing in-house?
Right.
That's usually announced in September, October.
Is that what it is? Okay. I can double-check on the timeline, but we've not heard anything back yet.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Redding. Schools, Mr. George.
We are approaching the final month of school, so a lot of fun things that come along with that. Um, and I just wanna give a quick shout out to, uh, whoever runs the Mount Healthy City Schools, uh, website. It's, um, always pretty accurate and, uh, I'll tell you what, they have been very busy in this final, uh, quarter of school. A lot going on in April and, uh, March, March, April and May, but I wanna highlight a couple of things. Uh, on April twenty-seventh, from four to seven PM, uh, the district is host, hosting a virtual, uh, open house for new students. And to, uh, register for this open house, you'll contact, uh, S. Richter at mounthealthycityschools.org, I'll spell that out. S.R.I.C.H.T.E.R. at M.T.H.C.S. dot org. And, um, there are several cool stories on there, but, uh, two of them that I wanna speak about. The, uh, high school students have recently visited, uh, the University of Cincinnati's IT program and, um, that was a, there was a career expo and there's, uh, some cool pictures on the website of that, the students that attended that. And then they also attended Xavier University and, um, the high school band actually performed there after the honor band after being on a, a three-year hiatus. And it, it gives mention to all the students that were involved in that, so I just wanna, uh, shed some light on that, but. Besides that, like I said, we're in the final month, so, may see some changes to traffic and things like that on the main roads, but that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Questions? Okay, streets, Ms. Russell.
I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. Along then to the mayor's report, Mr. Wolf.
All right, um, just a quick follow-up on the playground equipment. We just had a We Thrive meeting today and most of the meeting was about grants. And, um, I put on Nicole Key's radar from Hamilton County Public Health. New playground equipment and, um, that absolutely falls in line with Hamilton County Public Health. So, she's gonna, she took a note, she's gonna keep that on her radar as grants come through, so.
Thank you.
We have some other eyes on it as well. Might as well just jump into the other We Thrive stuff. So, um, the artworks thing that I gave you at the last meeting, um, we had to decide at tonight's meeting whether we were gonna go with the five thousand dollar plan or ten thousand dollar plan. Currently, there's ten thousand in the bank account for our We Thrive committee, uh, so, we're, we're leaning towards the five thousand, so we don't exhaust it all. But then, concern came up because we have a lot of projects that are coming up soon. The first one is the Heal Grant, uh, where we got a grant for ten thousand dollars for Hamilton County to do an active transportation plan. That means walking, um, scooters, bikes, wheelchairs, et cetera, anything non-motorized. They are going to be working on that planning shortly, we should be getting the funding within about the next three weeks for that. They'll take care of it, they're actually gonna do community outreach, do surveys, uh, go door-to-door, et cetera. And one of the concerns that came up is they're already doing outreach for active transportation and most of the artworks plan would again be community, based on community outreach, that's what it would be funding. So, we know how hard it is to get people to survey and trying to do two different things, using fifteen thousand dollars didn't seem to make sense. So, Hamilton County Public Health is willing to add art questions into their active transportation survey. So, for example, when they're asking people about the walkability or, you know, bikeability, et cetera, they can ask questions, what type of public art, art installments would make Mount Healthy more appealing for walkers, bikers, et cetera? You know, lighting the alleyways, sculptures, murals, whatever. Um, so, we're, Hamilton County Public Health is willing to do that already with the Heal Grant. So, we're gonna make a proposal back to artworks that they cut the survey and community engagement portion from what they were offering and then lower the cost for their public art plan. So, we're kinda giving a counter offer now, um, that's pretty much the consensus that was given, so. It just doesn't make sense to be redundant and have all these people kinda doing the same thing, um, so we're trying to maximize resources there. So, I'll keep you updated to see what they say. Uh, we have to reply to artworks in two days on Thursday, so Betty Bullis is gonna take care of that and we're hoping to minimize that expense. Along with grants, I mentioned, um, the wetland, we got grants, the E twenty-two grant, that's gonna be coming through, um, soon. The first five thou-, thousand dollars will be coming through and Aaron's connected and Alex is connected on the emails for those, so we'll let them know when that funding's available that we talked about. And then, uh, we also got EO twenty-two grant of three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, uh, to do a health fair. Again, we had a health fair, uh, for multiple years at the beginning of We Thrive and then kinda collapsed because the police department started to do their own thing and just kinda fell apart. So, we have some good funding to bring that back and there's a committee working on that already. Um, Aaron, you're on that, um, right, weren't you on it or was Alex? Alec, we're, there was a separate committee from We Thrive, maybe you weren't on it, I'm sorry. Yeah, Alex is on it, uh, Mary Layman's on it, uh, there's a few others on it, so, there will be a health, health fair coming up again and I'll give you more details once that happens and it's being funded, um, through an EO twenty-two grant, which is, my understanding is it's leftover COVID funds that have to go to public health, so, that's what we're going to be using that for. Moving away from We Thrive, another update, these, um, the Third Century Mount Healthy, which is the, the new name of the Mount Healthy Community Urban redevelopment corporation, um, its property acquisitions are a nightmare. So, I told you that cash buyers came in with no contingencies for two of the three properties, uh, kinda undercut them at the last second. So, they were willing to make an offer for the house to get a starting project, get some revenue, to then do the other things and they hadn't heard back from the landlord. So, just today they found, or not the landlord, the realtor, just today they found out that Kevin Dwyer passed away, the realtor, only forty-two years old, so. I don't know what happened, but it was unexpected and tragic, so, all of that right now, who knows what's going on? Um, they can't even make a bid right now because the realtor's passed away, so, everything's kind of in a holding pattern for now. We'll find out what's going on. Three C M H has another meeting on Thursday, so hopefully we'll have an update by then. I know Tom, um, has spoken to the realtor's father, um, who's trying to sort out all of the things that are in the process right now. So, he's dealing with his son's death and all the business, so this could take a while. But just wanted to update you, just another snag, keeps going, that's where we are right now. And then, uh, just another update, we had Real Deal Boxing come in here a little while back, um, with some needs. They have a space, they needed some funding. Uh, then we have Emmanuel Temple Apostolic Church, which has money and they have a church, but they need some more space for storage and, um, I connected the two. Churches may be hoping to share some of the space down at Hilltop for some of their storage, which then in turn they would pay for some of that, which would help Real Deal with their rent, so. Let's hope two of these groups can work together, uh, they are in contact with each other now. And then the last thing, um, I have a new appointee for Tree Commission, he's actually been on the books for several months now, he was hoping to come up here, uh, but he's, um, had some health issues. But Tom Davis, um, is gonna be our next appointee, so I'm recommending him and I would like you all to vote for him. Um, when we get to new business, uh, you do need to vote for approval. He is an arborist, so he would be perfect for the Tree Commission, he's already been helping out a lot, my understanding. Feel free to say anything else about him. He's been an arborist, uh, I think with the city or with the county, I don't know which, for a number of years and has worked, uh, he has been at a number of our meetings here recently and helped out with a lot of the planning and then the information I shared about why do we mulch? A lot of that came from him, so, great resource. And he lives right on Bernard, is a resident, local professional, so he'd be great to have on, so, I do ask you to approve that appointment, uh, under new business.
And something else I could add about Tom as well is he's not only an arborist, but he has an ISA certification with his, uh, municipal specialist, which is for those outside of the tree world, that's a very special certification, kind of tells people that he has, um, specialization for urban areas.
Thank you, that's great. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Anybody have any questions? Okay, then we'll move on to the city manager's report, Mr. Bauer.
Thank you. See, update on, uh, UDF, we did have the traffic counter there last week. Looks like on average, a hundred and sixty-one cars come through that alley. Did you talk to Justin, did he give you that number? Yeah, I mean, that's, for an alley that, I guess technically should only have two residences off of it. I mean, you know, imagine if you had a hundred and sixty cars coming through your driveway.
That was in a week, in a week?
In a week, and that's the daily average.
When we had, um, well, probably schools were closed that Friday, so that dropped down, so, usually on weekends it's a lot less, so about two hundred cars a day.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's kinda crazy if that's your driveway. So, we did install, uh, today and were you, were you guys there when Justin did it, when he put the, uh?
Yeah, he woke me up.
Okay. We wanted to make sure it was in a place that you would agree with, that we've, you know, we all felt would kind of, yeah, okay, all right. We, we may put more, we'll see, we'll kinda, we'll keep the traffic counter there and kinda go back and just see. I mean, I think that's probably one of the biggest things, if we could just decrease the amount of cars that use that cut through and I think putting the speed bumps there and just making it so it's not as, I mean, it's a nice, it's probably the nicest alley in Mount Healthy. So, it's, makes it easier to speed on it unfortunately, you know, I mean, it's nice to have that, but, uh.
I did tell Dave earlier that I was, you know, I got home and I was at another meeting and I saw that and I thought, oh my God, there's a lot of speed bumps. So, so anyway, I, I sat out in the side yard and kinda watched the traffic and I seen this one car go, you know, came and apparently he was, he was bypassing, you know, just the lights and he came around and he went around UDF's speed bump and came and kinda went to the stop.
Right. Right. And I mean, I'm, I'm hoping to even maybe put, I mean, we'll see how it goes, but we can even put another one or two, like, at that bend, like, kinda cock, kinda cockeyed, so to speak. Yeah. I mean, we can also even just like paint another yellow line, make it look like there's a speed bump too. I mean, there's, there's options, we'll, we'll see how this goes and make, uh, maybe Aaron can do an optical illusion for us with some chalk out there or, uh.
The artwork, there you go.
Yeah. Right.
It's still up there, the new graffiti.
Oh, there you go, there you go. Gotcha. So, we'll, we'll leave the, uh, the traffic counter there for another week, just to see if there's an immediate change, but, I mean, we'll kinda, we'll try to keep revisiting it unless, I mean, you know, keep us up to date what things look like from your end and if we need to add more speed bumps, they're not that expensive and Justin can go out there, you know? I guess, I assume it took probably an hour or two just to get them installed, it's not that much of a time investment for us, so, just keep us up to date and let us know how it's working for you. Yeah, and I'll, I'll keep pushing, um, was it Steve Kling, what's his name, Tim Kling? Um, I haven't heard back from him, I mean, it'd be, yeah, I mean, it'd be nice if we could get some speed bumps actually in the parking lot too. I think that would help, but I have a feeling that probably just will never happen, but, you know, I'll try to keep, keep on them and.
I'd like to see what, um, the trucks do, some of the trucks.
Right. See what happens. Um, let's see, Mr. Oliver was here last meeting from Stadium Bar, now Suite Thirty-One. He had said May eleventh was the date for the objection, I think it's gonna get extended past that, but wanted to see, uh, I was not directly involved with previous objections, so it's kinda coming up to that point where we'll have the actual objection, uh, the meeting. Do we wanna have some kind of a safety committee meeting to discuss if there's, I mean, are we already, are, are we committed to following all the way through it? I mean, um, Chief is kinda open to both, I mean, we're kind of in a little bit of a difficult situation where he's not been open with the new restaurant that long, so we don't have a ton of history, but just kinda looking for some guidance, exactly what we want to happen with the objection. Do we wanna per, actually follow through with it or? Ideas, suggestions?
I would like to discuss it, but typically, uh, while I'm not from Missouri, uh, but I would like time for him to show me.
Agreed.
So, uh, maybe we can postpone it for a while or something like that, but I think we need to discuss it, so, we can definitely have a, uh, a committee meeting about it or a work session, I'm not opposed to either one.
Chief will be here at the next meeting, so, I mean, we can definitely kinda get his input as to how he feels with things so far. I mean, we haven't had any issues, but again, he's only been open for a week and a half or two weeks or something like that, so, I mean, it's just not enough time to really know. I mean, I would bet we had, don't have more than two months until we probably have to have it.
Yeah.
Till the board just says, here's your date, we gotta do it.
Of the ones, this is before you were city manager, of the ones where we have withdrawn objections, we've done so through a memorandum of understanding with the bars.
Right.
So, we basically sat down with them and said, we will withdraw all the objections if you do this, this and this.
Those were, those were renewals.
Correct.
This is a transfer.
Correct.
Yep.
So.
I don't wanna just drop it.
Yeah.
We've gotta do something, either a memorandum of understanding or ask our law director to go up there and state our case, one way or the other.
That's.
Yeah, I think we need to find out some more information, like, what, what our deadline is and, and things like that, so, so we understand what, what we're looking at here.
Yeah, I think it was either this morning or yesterday morning, Scott Solomon emailed me saying it looked like it was gonna extend past the May eleventh, but we don't have a date yet, so, by the next meeting I can, I can bring that date, I would imagine it would be set by then, but.
Yeah.
I'll let you know, and then, um, I, I reviewed the, the MOU that we put together, so, I mean, I can, we can kinda have that in front of us at the next meeting as well to see if that's, if we want something of similar nature or if we want to add or take away things, kinda whatever we wanna present to Mr. Oliver.
Okay, yep.
So.
Yeah, we'll, um.
Do we, I mean, we can just discuss it during council, I didn't, I didn't know if we wanted to have a, but again, Jerry will be here next, uh, next meeting.
Okay, let's discuss it during council, but in the meantime, I'll give you a call and find out, like, what our limitations are, what our deadlines are, what.
Sure.
Those kinda things, cause I don't recall the exact deadlines in.
Right.
This would be different as well, cause we'd have to include Diane in the conversations, is my guess, the current owner of the liquor license.
Yes.
I know he, I know Chief has tried to contact her a couple of times, I don't think it's gone anywhere, um, but. And he can, I'll have him include that in his report at the next meeting, but again, we can discuss then.
Okay, is that current chief?
Current chief, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yep. Just kinda wanna put that on everyone's radar there. Um, let's see, already touched uncovered bridge. Um, let's see, some police updates, they'll, they'll be participating in a career day at the high school, May tenth and twelfth, that'll be Chief and Detective Jones. Staffing, we've got one offer we're gonna put out tomorrow, someone who's just finishing up in the academy and one potential. So, that, if, if the potential will work out and the offer that's gonna get submitted tomorrow, that would fill the two new positions. But then with Sergeant Nolte retiring, we'll have another, another position open that we'll be looking for. And kinda with him, I was gonna read, he put a little, uh, the Eagles are gonna host another retirement party for him, so that'll be May twentieth, it's a Saturday. I was gonna just kinda read through, I, I mean, I've worked with Greg since I've been here in twenty seventeen, but I don't think I ever truly realized how long he'd been here. I'll just read this. Said, I began my career here in nineteen ninety, I was sponsored through the police academy by Mount Healthy Police Department under Chief George Hunt and Safety Service Director Lois Melvin, uh, who appointed him. Uh, he remained in auxiliary status into nineteen ninety-one, he had a break of service from ninety-one to ninety-three, reappointed by Al Schaefer. Uh, auxiliary until ninety-six when he was appointed part-time, ninety-eight, he went to full-time. Served as patrol from, until two thousand two, then became detective, uh, twenty-eleven became sergeant and he's twice served as interim police chief, uh, as he was during while he was a sergeant, so. Long time that he's been here, hope people can make it to, uh, his retirement party. I think he's right at twenty-five years full-time, but obviously since nineteen ninety, he's been involved with the city to some degree, so. Kinda crazy, he longed, he's, how long he has served.
What's the time?
What time?
Nine, uh, I don't, did Chief bring that up?
I think three to seven.
Three to seven, okay.
When is he retiring, end of April?
It's Saturday, Saturday's his last day.
Oh, okay.
Is this a surprise?
No. No. It is not. So, I hope people can make it and, you know, I'll double-check the details and get it out to you. We'll have some kind of announcement for it, but, twentieth, May twentieth, yep.
He was second generation. His dad was here also.
Right, right. Yeah, you're a long time, very helpful, tons of knowledge, just great to work with. We'll miss him. So, kind of with that, that'll open up a sergeant position, so we'll do testing for that. It'll be kind of similar to the chief assess, uh, the chief process, we'll have an assessment, actually, the same organization that put on the chief assessment, we'll do the sergeant assessment. And we'll do some kind of panel interview. Chief will kind of figure out who he wants to be on it. Might have someone from council or someone from the community kind of be on it. That's, we've done stuff like that in the past, just to get as much engagement and buy-in as possible.
Scott, when was that career day that you said that the?
May, he said tenth and twelfth. Him and Detective Jones, Chief and Detective Jones will be there. So, I don't, I mean, I assume it's lots of different people will be there, but they'll be representing the police department. I don't know if, I'm just thinking off the top of my head now, I don't know if fire's going to be there or not. I can double-check that, but at least Chief said he would be there for it. I guess, mention the school. I wanted to bring up just them having shut down last Friday. I guess just wanted to reiterate that it was not at all the police department that came to that determination. I mean, it, we left that up, completely up to the school, we just provided them information. I mean, we didn't have anything that said that there was necessarily an imminent threat, that there would be any kind of violence. But, you know, I guess I just wanted to make sure people knew. I don't know that we've ever necessarily provided that determination for any situation. I don't know if the police has ever said, you got to shut your business down because there's an imminent threat. If there's anything that was that crazy, I think we'd probably bring in like the FBI or something like that to make that kind of call. But, you know, that was all handled by the school. They felt, felt it was necessary. And I mean, we were there to back them up and provide additional security, and they were very thankful and had numerous meetings and felt like it went well. But, just, I guess, I just wanted to make sure that it was the school's call, it had nothing to do with the city or the police department. Thankfully, thankfully, nothing happened. I mean, it ended up well. Let's see, another thing with PD, the funeral seemed to go really well, the procession through town. We had police and fire representing, Public Works got out there and did extra cleaning on the streets to pick up trash. We cleaned up around behind the bank. There were some overgrown areas, we just went out and just mowed some stuff, just that was going to be along the procession, just to make sure it looked as nice as it could be. So, seemed like it was a really good showing. I don't know how many people got out there to see it, but, I mean, it's pretty impressive to watch and, you know, sad. But, great that we can all get out there to kind of celebrate the service and all that, so it felt like that went, went as well as it could have. Let's see, fire, just wanted to say we're going to have our captain assessment June twenty-eighth, finally adding those three captains. And then, May second, I just wanted to clarify that we are going to still have our work session. And I think that was kind of what came out of our previous work session, just talking about streets with Jerry here. He's going to kind of talk to us about how he was going to approach broken-down cars and ticketing and towing. Is that still what we want to do? Is that the focus? Any particular questions I can take to Jerry to beforehand? I mean, he'll be armed and ready to go with, I mean, he's already having guys out there.
We want to talk about the speed bumps on Compton, possibly.
Yeah, and, I mean, it can be anything and everything.
I mean, that's what we want to ask him about.
Okay.
One of the things.
Right. Anything else in particular? I mean, you can let me know before that, but just kind of want to give him as much prep time as possible. I mean, he'll, again, he'll let you know his strategy when it comes to this, these things and kind of what he's seen and what he's got his guys focusing on. And if we want him to kind of reorient and focus on different things, we can let him know. Yeah.
Cars that are parked across the sidewalks, all night long, half a day, you know, you have to go out in the street to get around them. They, they completely block sidewalks. I'd like to put that on the radar myself.
Right. Yeah, when we drove them around, either it was first or second week here, Justin and Bill Knight, I and Melanie, we all went out. And, I mean, that was one of the first things he saw was just cars parked weird places, cars that were clearly broken down and were not roadworthy. And were just kind of appeared to have been sitting there for long periods of time. So, I mean, he's got, he noticed those things on his own, so I mean, he's definitely got them on his radar. And we can, you know, by the next meeting, he'll have had some time to kind of work on some of them. We can see how many cars he's gotten off the road, kind of thing, so. But again, if there's any, anything else you would have, let me, let me know, just so I can, again, he can get the data and be prepared for the meeting. But, okay, so May second, we'll have that work session. That, I think that's all I have.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bauer. Moving on then to the finance director, Melanie Branditz.
March reports were in your packet. First quarter's over with. We do, last week, the twenty-twenty-two auditors were out and started their work for the twenty-twenty-two audit. They finished all their field work, so now it's just back and forth emails and so they're on the roll to work on it. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Questions for Melanie? Okay, moving on to ordinances and resolutions. We have no second readings on either ordinance or resolution. Make my fingers work. Yeah, you have one ordinance before you. New ordinance. Ordinance number twenty-three dash two zero one two. An ordinance assessing cost of the removal of litter, rubbish, and garbage and declaring an emergency. There's two addresses on that, I think.
Yeah.
On Compton Road. Questions, comments? You declared an emergency, but do you want it passed tonight for, to get the money to the, you know, auditor, county auditor?
I mean, that would be up to you. Either way is fine.
We usually do.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's up to council.
Yeah, go for it, yeah.
Yeah.
Are you familiar with these two spots?
No.
Is this stuff that was just dumped down at the curb or was it, was it actually in the, on the, on the residence?
I do not recall.
Okay.
I can double-check, but yeah, off the top of my head, I do not know.
Okay. Questions or comments, council?
Yeah, I apologize, my connection is not going through right now to be able to look it up.
I'll make a motion to suspend the two reading rule.
Okay, Mr. Redding has made a motion to suspend.
I'll second that.
Mr. Young is seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Lingo?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Redding?
Aye.
Mrs. Dosa?
Aye.
Mr. George?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Rissel?
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of seven-zero, the two-reading rule's been suspended. Questions? Comments? I would ask for a motion then.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-three dash two zero one two.
Okay, Mr. Parsons has made a motion to adopt and Ms. Dosa is seconded. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Lingo?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Redding?
Aye.
Mr. Dosa?
Aye.
Mr. George?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Rissel?
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of seven-zero, ordinance number twenty-three dash two zero one two is approved. Then we have one resolution. Resolution number twenty-three dash one two oh four. Resolution declaring it necessary to levy a tax in excess of the ten mil limitations for police services and requesting the Board of Elections to place the issue on a November seventh, two thousand and twenty-three ballot and declaring an emergency.
Pretty much everything you need to know is on that first page, November seventh ballot, this will be restricted to police services. And then, I think it's in the second whereas is where it says it will be a continuing levy as opposed to the five-year renewal. So, that's really the highlights of it. Deadline to get it on the ballot is ninety days from the ballot. So, I mean, we have, if we want to do two readings, that's fine. You pass it, then I submit it to the board and it, the Board of Elections, and it goes on, so.
Yeah.
If you want to do a, two readings, that, again, that's, it's up to you guys.
We should have exhibit A attached, though.
I think that was in your scan.
Certification should be on.
It's for one hundred and thirty-one thousand. It should be on your PDF. I don't know if, do you know if it made it into the packet? Okay. So, the exhibit did not get into the packet, but that was the certificate, the actual certification that came back from the county. So, it's basically just tells you the amount, which is one hundred and thirty-one thousand.
Any questions or comments, council? We doing first reading then?
First reading?
First reading, yeah.
Got it all right down this end, first reading? Okay, first reading on this one, council? April eighteenth. Okay, that is all of the legislation. Hold business.
Denise, did you say we'll schedule a meeting, a committee meeting next time?
Um, the next meeting, I'll schedule a meeting.
Got it.
I got to talk to Justin about the pots and figure all that stuff out first.
Got it.
Is this sorta old business?
Uh, I guess it could be either, I don't know.
I guess it is old business since we started talking about it last meeting.
Uh, so, okay, we'll do old business for it. So, what I, the printout I gave you with the map. Basically, tonight, I feel like we should come to a determination on which road we want to submit for sorta. Just this morning, I got the application from sorta, just sort of an announcement, here's the application, applications have started. But, we would want to pass legislation at the next meeting to, kind of like what we do with OPWC, with the skip funds, so. The site tonight, or if, or if we want to have a special Streets Committee meeting, that'd be fine, too. But, uh, so the ones that JMA suggested are the ones in red. We've already got Harrison approved between Compton and Adams. That should happen this year or next year. So, they were suggesting from Compton all the way south for Harrison or to do Hickman, Compton all the way south. That was basically their suggestions. I mean, for sorta, it basically has to be, is it within three-quarters of a mile of a bus route? It doesn't have to be on a bus route, but that's what made, uh, Compton so easy, is because it's a main bus route. We're, we're out of the easy ones, frankly, for sorta. Uh, any other street we're going to pick is going to be just off of a bus route. But, you're allowed to do that. It's not going to, it probably won't score quite as high. So, we couldn't, you know, say do Seward or something like that. So, unless.
Of the two that are, excuse me, the, the two that are marked red you're talking about?
Yes.
Harrison and Hickman. Of the two, in my opinion, Hickman is much worse.
Agreed. Yeah, I mean, Harrison, it was mostly because it's close to Hamilton, close to the bus line.
Right.
But, I, I would agree, Hickman is far, far worse than Harrison.
Yeah.
And in, in general, Hickman, I think, was our number three for OPWC, which didn't submit for. Does that sound right? We had done, we had actually submitted Warner and Joseph to, for skip funds, and I think Hickman was a close third. Is that?
Yes, I don't have my list here, but.
I think that was our top three.
I believe Hickman was really close, yes.
Hickman, yeah, Hickman was the number three, but I would, I would really like to ask the residents of Hickman if they want their street rebuilt.
Okay.
Because it will not be the same as it is now. I mean.
Right.
It'd be very nice, I'm sure, but there may not be any parking, sidewalks may be against the street. It's very narrow through there, so I, I don't think we have time to do that before this. And also, that's going to be very, very expensive. And we, if it's sorta, we have to pay our thirty percent out of pocket. That can't be a zero percent loan. That could be through skip.
So, just to take the, the discussion a little bit further, south of Madison on Hickman, there is a sidewalk on the one side, there is curb and gutter currently, not very well, but it, there is. And there's a sidewalk on, on the one side, so, and there's some.
I'm mainly thinking from Compton to Madison.
Yeah, from Cap, Compton to Madison is a disaster.
Yeah.
Down by Trinity.
So, with that said, I was, that's just something we, we can maybe do is look at sidewalks on just one side, if that helps us with a few more feet.
Right.
There's no driveways, correct, to the houses?
Between.
In that area, I don't think, I think they use the alleys, well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think, I think those houses are too close together to have driveways.
There are some, but I don't, but I don't know if they're official.
The driveways are official, oh, okay.
There are, yeah, there are some that have driveways.
Yes. So, in other words, I don't even know if they have, I don't recall if they, walking that street my entire life, I don't recall if they have curb cuts or not, to be totally honest, but I know there are driveways there.
Yes, they've got an alley on.
There's no curbs.
There's no curbs.
There's no curbs.
Well, what's a better word? There's no.
Right.
Yeah.
They just drive over the sidewalk, I guess, yeah.
There's no railroad tide cuts.
Yeah, there's no curb.
The west side has the alley behind them. The east side does not have an alley, if that means anything.
So, having said that, my opinion would be for sorta, we would, we should apply for Harrison.
It's not to say we, if, if we want to come up with a third, this is just kind of what JMA, JMA was suggesting, so.
This has to be, this has to be figured out today.
We, we have to know so they can have the legislation for the next meeting, two weeks from now.
I mean, in the next two weeks, if we change our mind, I mean, I don't know. If we wanted to call a separate meeting or something, we could, but just wanted to get the legislation to.
Didn't he? John wanted to know by the first.
Yep.
Which is the day before a meeting.
Right.
We could do it on the second.
Yeah, ideally, we would decide tonight, and then I would tell John Godey at JMA, then he would get all the applications together and.
Start to estimating.
Yep, yep.
I'm leaning with you about Harrison.
What about it?
The Harrison.
Kind of agree.
Agree with you, yeah.
Well, I think what you said makes sense. Hickman is definitely worse, but for as far as sorta money, Harrison Avenue is your obvious answer for that. Okay, council, what do you think? We going to make a decision tonight or you going to push it off till next meeting?
We have, we have to have the ordinance or resolution, the resolution, I guess, at the next meeting printed with.
So, then we need to decide tonight what you want to move for.
Explain, Bob, why, why Harrison's better. I'm just so torn because of how bad Hickman is.
Why Harrison rather than Hickman?
Well, just for the sorta, like, why does it make more sense to?
Than Hickman?
Yes.
Well, Hickman is going to cost a lot of money, a lot more than Harrison. And we will have to pay at least thirty percent plus the engineering, and that will be out of our pocket. That will not be something we can put in the state loan that we're building up.
So, there's no interest on that loan?
There's no interest on that loan.
Well, there would be on this, on the sorta ones, there's interest. On the skip funding, there isn't.
Well, we, we're not borrowing the money. We're paying our money, money of, out of our.
Yes.
The money we've built up over the years.
Yep.
Out of our fund. So, it would be less money out of our pocket if we do Harrison. And then apply for the skip loan for Har, uh, Hickman when it comes up after, well, we've got two other streets in front of it. So, with those two streets and then Hickman after that. And we could also have time then to talk to the residents of Hickman and see what they would like.
What they want.
We can't, they're not, we're not going to please them all. Ever do, but, you know, at least we could have an idea of what they want. I'm not trying to force anybody into an opinion. That's just my opinion.
Anybody else? So, I'm, so I'm hearing the consensus is to recommend Harrison Avenue from, uh, Compton South to Kemp, to Kemper, basically. So I'm, so I'm hearing the consensus is to recommend Harrison Avenue from, uh, Compton South to Kemp, to Kemper, basically.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
And that would be applying with sorta funding. That always sounds odd, sort of. Is that an agreement, council?
Yeah.
Do we need a voice motion for that, you think?
I think it would be better.
Sure.
Okay, so, uh, Bob, you want to make a motion?
Uh, I guess I could try, I make a motion that we select Harrison Avenue from Compton Road to the south terminus to apply for the sorta funding.
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Parsons has made a motion for sorta funding on Harrison Avenue would be our next project, and, uh, Ms. Lingo has seconded the motion, any questions or comments? Uh, just a voice vote, right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried unanimously.
I'll get with JMA.
Any other old business? How about voting for the, uh, fire, the chief position with the fire department, or? What do you have, Mayor?
Uh, what's that?
The, uh, tree commission.
Tree commission.
Yeah, so I would like to recommend Tom Davis of seventy-three twenty-nine Bernard as the next member of our urban tree commission, and it just takes an approval from council.
Questions, council? Mayor explained who Mr. Davis was earlier.
Yep, I'm, I'm good with it, do we need a voice vote, or?
I think so.
Okay.
Well, I make a motion to, uh, make, uh, to put Mr. Davis on the, uh, tree commission.
I second.
Okay, motion was made by Mr. Redding, seconded by Mr. George, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried unanimously, thank you. Other old business, council?
One thing, the, the, what we're doing Saturday, um, there's ninety percent chance of rain, uh, the whole day. So, is that, and I didn't hear you say rain or shine, or cloudy, or snow, or?
We were watching the weather very closely, did not make a decision one way or the other.
Okay, okay, yeah, it's supposed to be pretty nasty, so.
It's a weekend.
Okay. Yeah, it's the weekend, right, Ross? Yeah.
Mr. Bauer, I have one thing, uh, it's not really old business, but it is. Down on Elizabeth Street, Duke Energy repaired some gas lines, down by the entrance to the, uh, Barton Street Home. Is that, is that the name of it?
Senior living, yeah, South Martin.
South Martin. They did a very poor job of patching the street, and it's under their responsibility to, to repair that. It'll, it'll knock your ball joints off if you hit it. So if, I don't know how long they want to wait for settling or so forth, you know, I'm not demanding something be done right now, but I think we need to watch it, at the very least, and call them and remind them that, uh, they need to patch it properly. Yeah, okay, any other old business?
Wouldn't wait too long.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty, it is pretty bad, yeah, it works like a speed hump.
Yeah, it does. Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it needed to be, what, Joe, you said they had water in the lines?
Yeah, that's what I was told by the construction crew, that there was water in the gas lines, so, which is never good.
You know, it needed repairing, and obviously it needed dug up to do it, but. Okay, um, new business, council?
Check and see if we could do a economic development meeting, maybe six fifteen, before our next council meeting on the, on the second, is that possible? Just kind of talk about, uh, cover bridge, and a couple of things that found out there.
Who's on that committee with?
Uh, Joe and Bob.
Okay.
So I know we've got roof quotes, are you, can you, is there anything else, somebody can talk to me beforehand, anything else you think you want for that meeting? Or if there's any other maintenance, thinking of the other two properties as well.
Yeah, so I was kind of, a little, little more focused on the other two properties also, so, some things.
Slumming up if there's anything else.
Okay, it was that the only quotes we got on the roof was, uh, the last quote from, uh, Berniker?
Which, which one?
For the other roofs also.
Yeah, I think it was like twenty-five thousand eighty-five, I don't remember which is which.
Yeah, I could, okay.
A little over a hundred for the other two roofs.
Right, right, okay. That's all I have.
Okay, any other new business, council?
Think so.
No, I'm asking for new business.
Oh, no.
Okay, Denise, going once.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn by Ms. Lingo, do I have a second? All those in favor? Of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone.